September the fifth, two thousand twenty-four at six forty-two P M. Um, and we'll do roll call. Uh, Terry Warner.
Here.
Uh, and Mayor, Mayor Protam, Matthew McGovern.
Here.
Laura Sanchez Fowler.
Here.
Mike McClabb.
Here.
Sam Houston Clinton.
Here.
Okay, if you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unique Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
And please remain standing for the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, gracious Lord, thank you for the rain that we've had, and thank you, Lord God, for this beautiful city of Martindale. And as your servants, we just ask that you help us to govern wisely and that you give us discernment and wisdom. And Heavenly Father, we do thank you for the gift of salvation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we will have public comments and.
There's two, uh, there's two public comments. Uh, first one is Gloria Carlo.
And I did put her flyers on bird watching at your.
Yeah, I will.
They're in black and white.
I also put it in a new call. Business call by your.
Okay.
Greetings. I'm Gloria Carlo, and I would like to invite the Martindale community to join the Calvo County Bird Watchers Club. This is a group I have founded for the members to explore and appreciate the diverse and mesmerizing birds that reside in, migrate through, or visit the Calvo County. Uh, the membership is free and the contributions of observations, expertise, insights, setting photos or videos to the group are nicely encouraged. And I also try to once a month make an event for the community that loves the birds. Get together, everybody's welcome. And I try to do it as a family thing. I was talking already with Ashley from the library so we can do like a games or something that the community can have fun and enjoy. And thank you so much for considering this invitation and your Chinese prayer, please see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks very exciting.
Um, second citizen comment, Mary Beth Harper.
We have some, uh, and asked a lot more than it cannot be. Library and your mayor and always out.
You're welcome.
That's some other bits. Uh, okay, these are some other monthly things. You know, September twenty-first, a library that can just make in the River Appreciation Festival. And to, okay, first of all, there's Mermaid Day in Martindale. And I'll be recording coffee on the bookstore. Okay, we have three mermaids, three of them will be here. And they'll read stories about water and the river, then they'll do parts and crafts with the kids. And then I'll provide the six also over in bookstore. Okay, J B O R A will, uh, allow us their model for water ships to be, to be big old things. Uh, it shows the flow of water in the river and what happens when pollution is introduced with watershed. And we'll also have other educational exhibits. Okay, on Saturday, October nineteenth, we have Fall Family Festival, that's from ten to twelve. And the student outdoor area, uh, between the river, that's. We have a bounce house, duck pond, say, Osprey heading to, working on that. Anyway, that's, that's going to be funded by Saint Devise. Then on Saturday, November sixteenth, there's World Court Day for children. Uh, that will be in bookstore. And that's paid by, say, the children's grants. And then on Friday, December sixth, the downtown tree hiding, uh, Santa, uh, will write through the neighborhoods, then he listens to the children's wishes. Uh, the library will have letters for Santa and other activities. And that's the big monthly events. And I've been also the library has a food bank. If I might not sound, run the library. If you have someone who need a food, uh, tell them because it's for me. And it's thoughtful, it's for. And also the library is looking for volunteers. If you got some extra time, come by to apply, uh, you can shell books. Uh, there's all kinds of things. We didn't need volunteers. Now, that's the first part of this. The second part is, this is from me. Uh, this is about the smart terminal or the access logistics. And the developer, um, wants to develop, okay, first of all, seven hundred and seventy acres that is in their original smart terminal, not all two thousand acres, not yet. Okay, this past Tuesday, San Marcos City Council voted four to three to annex, uh, seven acre strip of land to build a four-lane truck route. And it's going to connect with one ten to FM nineteen eighty-four, Reville Road. And there's been a group of us every, that showed up at every meeting to tell them that Reville Road is not designed for heavy trucks. Anyway, that road, when they do build it, will be built to San Marcos standards. Okay, next thing they're going to do is watershed protection plan. And this will be, this was, was presented at San Marcos planning in zone. And there's three different flood lanes in their first part of this development, but only one is addressed. And it's the one between Luke one ten and nineteen eighty-four. On the small paper, which you found, that these three blue areas are, there comes the flood. But only the one in the middle part, and to me, that's the least dangerous of all of them. But that's the one they want to do. And Q W T P up there stands for Qualified Watershed Protection Plan. And, uh, what they want to do is to build a big retention pond right in the middle of all that. And that, uh, the retention pond is going to be thirty-eight acres. And I don't know how deep it is or anything like that. And there's like, uh, it shows the, that energy park, it's called Energy Parkway, that truck route connects after one ten and nineteen eighty-four. Okay, one thing on this small paper, that is two heavy lines right there. That's in Martindale E T J right there. And what those two heavy lines are, I didn't know. I thought except you know the places. But on the next page, I got this from Kimlin Horn, this is their. Okay, here's that big retention pond right there in the middle. Thirty-eight acres and I don't know how deep it's going to be. The surrounding farms around there have wells and the wells only like twenty feet deep. So if this thing is twenty feet deeper, a lot deeper, all the wells are going to go right. Because this is, uh, the flood lane is real shallow. Hey, this also shows the, that gray line right here is that new road. And then down here at the bottom, I wrote in Martindale E T J, Martindale E T J. And there's the two heavy black lines right there. And that shows some sort of water flow from Reville Road across Martindale E T J and to this detention. And it's not in city limits. I know you don't care, but if it's not in city limits, but I'm going to let you all know that. Uh, they're getting closer. It's just right on the other side of the.
Okay, thank you for this, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is it for public comments.
Okay. All right, um, so we've been really busy in the last probably ten days, and I invited, uh, uh, chief board to come and help me explain about the chemicals that were found on the farmland of Landzola.
You know, on August sixth, oh, I'm sorry, on August twenty-second, at about six o'clock, we received some information that there may have been some hazardous materials on some property uh, in the six hundred block of North West River Road, that property to the right between eighty and North West River Road. Uh, we went, went out there and looked, and it was in fact hazardous materials on that property. We contacted the landowner, we contacted T C D Q, uh, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. We contacted Calvo County's Emergency Management as well as the landowners. Uh, we contacted their engineers as well, our engineers and their engineers. And when we did all that, we got the ball rolling on trying to get a cleanup. We immediately rescinded any kind of permits that they had to the landowners, so they couldn't go on the property, couldn't do any more construction, couldn't do anything out there. Um, that was related to them and they agreed with that, those terms. Uh, they immediately started working on, uh, getting bids to go get a, a cleanup out there. And that cleanup actually started this Tuesday. Uh, they, they went out there, they contained all of the, uh, materials. Uh, the company that's doing it is called Clean Harland. That, uh, that company was referred to the landowners by Virginia Parker. And so they use that, uh, that company. Uh, let me see where I'm at. Uh, they, on Tuesday, they went out there, they protected, isolated, and contained the barrels, which that consisted of them moving those hazardous barrels, there was ten of them, into other secure barrels. So they put them in the secure barrels so nothing else could happen to them any longer. Then they moved those barrels into, they're moving those barrels into a large container for transportation. I put it today. And that's what they finished up today for destruction site. And then they also today took samples and submitted all the samples, uh, for analysis. And we're just waiting on those samples to come back.
And in addition, the water company was, uh, informed, and they've done sampling and the water is good to drink.
And there was a, they, yeah, I kind of, yeah, Steve got a sample and then there'll obviously be a follow-up sample. Their normal sampling is on February, so they'll do another sample at that point.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Was this hazardous stuff, was this related to the former owner of that property?
It was, uh, in a barn that had been on that property and probably wasn't disclosed or probably no one inspected. I don't know. I don't know all that.
Yeah.
Any idea what it is?
Yeah, yes.
It was calcium arsenic.
Arsenic, yeah. It's, it's.
What does that use for?
It's used to, um, spray over cotton to prevent animal infestation.
It was a herbicide, pesticide for.
It's basically only for that.
It poliates the cotton before they go through the harp, the machine. It's, it.
It's been, it's been, it has been unable to be produced since the seventies, and it's been illegally legal since what, three, four years ago, something like that.
Yeah, so long.
Couldn't use it anymore as of a couple of years ago. Oh, yeah, these barrels were rust, they were oxidizing.
Was it seeping into the ground?
No.
No.
What brings this land though?
Pardon me?
Yes.
Well, you know, that's going to be a civil matter. I mean, the city's done what we need to do, and so.
We look.
It's been very long.
Yeah, we're not going to get into their civil matter issue. That's between the landowner, current landowner and them for whatever disclosure that they had and, and whatever they did. We just looked at it and said, hey, we need to get on this ASAP. And we got on it and had them get on as quick as they could. We had a holiday weekend in the middle of all that, so some of those, uh, hazardous material companies weren't coming out during that time or whatnot, so.
I'd say the mayor and Tommy did really well. As soon as I, as soon as I found out, the mayor got, got involved, called T C Q within twenty minutes. Then I called Tommy and then Tommy was there within twenty minutes after that. I mean, he literally, or, you know, he was on site in twenty minutes and we actually got access to the property within an hour.
Thank you.
So, so they, this is what happens when you live in a city, you get support. So they were excellent, excellent support, so.
Hopefully it'll be done and there will be, those, those test results come back that is, uh, negative or just minimal, maybe a scrape and dirt and get it out there.
Yeah, the, the, none of the barrels leaking except for, you don't tell them that, the one barrel that I, someone was on property and knocked it over, and that's what started. So this was only been, in theory, we, that we know of, has only been on exposure to soil as of that day.
From, yeah.
From that morning, that morning of the event, that, that, the city was notified. So there's, originally, of course, the concern was bigger, but at this point, it's, you know.
We're good.
We're good.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, on the mini pitch, uh, I've had a few people ask, are we going to go forward with that? Or, because we had really slowed down. Um, and as I think everybody knows, we moved from Hobson Ranch to phase two and phase three of city-owned parkland property. Um, so we, I have been talking to, uh, the people who are going to grant us the mini pitch. They have some concerns, and they said, before we can move forward, we will need your team to put together a formal report that address, addresses our concerns, says detailed below in a previous email from the executive director, Caitlin Morrow. So to recap, there are concerns are in these four areas. The entrance, where would people enter to go to the mini pitch? The pedestrian crossings, the lighting, and the plan, whatever the planned development is for the site. So one of the things that when we first went into Al Hollow, we were entering on nineteen seventy-nine. And, uh, I was unaware until chief informed me that people were parking up at Al Hollow across from phase one. Uh, sometimes just to not have to pay at phase one, and sometimes just to have a quiet place to go, just to go. And, um, that piece of land that is actually where the road is, is not owned by the city. So we'd have to talk to the owner and, and, uh, purchase that piece of property if that's even possible. Plus, um, this kind of goes into the next thing on the agenda. What I've done is I've contacted the Parks and Parks Advisory Board and the River Advisory Board and asked for their assistance in coming up with a plan as far as what the park, uh, would look like as far as hiking trails. You know, where, would they want a dog park? What, what would they like this eight acres of land to look like? So we're, and then that kind of goes into the next one. We're kind of planning, uh, a workshop, but I haven't gotten a date yet to try and, uh, hammer out some of the details as to where to put parking. Um, quite a few people agree that it should be off of Southeast River Road. Um, for reasons that I just stated, the land's not owned by the city partially, and it is dangerous. We don't want to encourage anybody to cross nineteen seventy-nine from phase two to phase one park to go swimming or whatever. Um, so there's a lot of things to be dealt with, but we're still planning on accepting the mini park gift at this point in time, and I am working with the Parks and the River Advisory Board Committee. So do you have any questions on that? As soon as I know a date of the, of the, uh, workshop, I'll let everybody know. Um, so Northwest River Road Grant. Where we're at on that is the engineering drawings are done, and we're starting to reach out to the homeowners for the easement. Um, letters have been sent out from Landzola. Few people have not, uh, been contacted yet. I'm looking at Matthew, because if it's, uh, over ten thousand dollars, then they, uh, buy, I don't know if it's by law or just by the rules of the grant, you have to get a, um.
Appraisal.
Appraisal, thank you. You have to get an appraisal of the property. And, and then the other piece that goes along with that is the John Creighton Cemetery is not owned by anybody. Uh, Cindy Woolley is forming a group.
So she, the column association.
Association. Um, she and her family have been taking care of the, the John Creighton Cemetery. They come and mow it and just make sure everything is, you know, in shipshape most of the time. And, um, so I put her in contact with the Langford people. And what we have to do by law is get, uh, do a title search on that. And I'm hoping that by doing that, the association, that that will help solve that problem. So that's what we're doing on that grant right now. Is there any questions on that?
This is pertains to Northwest Road. Could I ask, ask a question about that?
Sure.
So the fence went up right there by the cemetery in the first house on the left, and so are you pleased with the positioning of that in terms of the future of the road or how it looks? Or you feel good about that?
I like it, yeah.
Okay.
And it's open, so water can go through, and it was passed by the Historic Commission. And that, it's going to go into something that we're going to talk about a little bit later, but they were developing, under Laura's direction, before she left the Historic Commission, uh, some guidelines so it wouldn't just be, uh, kind of, uh, you know, somebody's desire, what something should look like, but an actual standard of keeping with, uh, the town and what we want it to look like. And I was actually very pleased when the fence went out. I thought that it was a real good design.
Yeah.
Did you like it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, um, so if you're on Northwest Road, you see markers now on sticks like little pieces of tape and we'll find out more about what those mean or.
You know, I'm not sure.
I know what those are.
What are they?
So they, the, the ones closest to the road, so it starts basically the property next to me. Um, uh, then the Carol's property, in the middle of that, that's where the actual acquisition starts. The Carol's had two lots there on the, now one. And so the middle of that is where the split starts, where they're acquiring land on, on that side of the road. And so the, um, first stake that's close to the road is the current easement, and then the second stake is the, uh, excuse me, the first stake is the right-of-way. The second stake is the proposed easement, and so they've done that all the way around to the shoot tree area, just so it's visual.
So that's, that's where we can expect to have our loan logo first consideration. We have two states on our.
Yeah. Well, you, I'll talk to your service because you, you already have, um, a permanent, uh, easement. Utility easement that's been subdivided. Um, they're going to go right through the middle of your swale.
Yeah.
To put the, the, the new water line.
The back, I'm just trying to understand what each of them means, though. The back one, the one close to the road, you said the curb.
Is the current right-of-way.
Yeah, but you, yeah, the first one will be the right-of-way and the second one's the ease, is the easement.
So that's the area we can assume that we would have.
Yeah, I can show you the plan, but yeah, they're going to go right to the easement, and that's where the water line is going to be. The right-of-way is owned by the city, and you can from the right-of-way over, the easement is technically your lands that you have to give access to, so you, you, it's good and bad. You pay property taxes on it, but then you also qualify, it qualifies for the size of your lot. You know, unless you want to go previous cover things, that you get, you still get that credit for that land. So you're responsible for the upkeep. Um, the, obviously, the issue is not to put any, like, for me, sprinklers, I have to move all my sprinkler system, because right now it's eighteen inches off the right-of-way. And the whole front has got to be moved now.
Got it.
You know, in some cases, four, five, you know, five or six feet, so. Um, and that's why they have to do an appraisal on my property, because they're, I've got more encumbrance than anyone else, um, from my standpoint. But yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna go right to the middle of your driveway, the swale is going to be right next to the tree.
The line comes up to our whole.
Yeah, right where that tree.
Eighteen months or whatever, but I'm, I'm just curious if you guys know, when will there be an opportunity for us to ask more questions, to get some more specifics, um, about what's going to happen to our property, about the timeline, about what, what to expect? There's, there are so many unknowns, and given that, you know, we, we, this is our life, so we would like them to, you know, prepare and know and understand really what this looks like. Um, you know, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, like I said, the timeline is, is quite important.
So I haven't talked to the engineer about those specific things yet, because we're still just trying to get through the gaining of the land.
Right.
The easements and everything. And then once we get that all taken care of, then we can actually go out for bids for people to actually do the work. And I guess that's when, it's not, I guess, I mean, that's when we will be formulating more of what you're asking.
The timeline.
Because the bidder, the bidder is going to interact with the engineer as far as the process. The engineer's kind of, you know, Tom, then they kind of said, this is what's going to happen.
Yeah.
But like you said, we don't know how many weeks it's going to be. The temporary road will be on the riverside, on our side. So it'll be right up on the edge of the right-of-way where the second flats. And that will be there the whole time. So there will be a one-way road there, no matter what, the whole process. So that, if it's eighteen months, it'll be there for eighteen months.
Are we, are we looking at, like, how far out? Do we, we, do we have an estimate where construction would begin roughly?
We're hoping that.
Deadline that has to be done by.
Well, we had to file for an extension because we got behind.
Right, and we were granted that?
Yes.
Okay, and when is that? Is that just indefinite or?
No, it's two years, I believe.
So a two-year extension?
But we don't think it's going to take that long. If we can get through the land acquisition phase, we're hoping by Christmas we can start going out for bids. And then we'll get going on it, yeah.
I just had a quick question then about the appraisal process, and Matthew, I'm sure you know about this, but when they appraise the property then, are they appraising the structure and the land, or are they doing the land separate, so you know how many square feet of land will be consumed, and then they calculate that or?
Yeah, they do a full evaluation of the property and it's, they have to do a full, the full appraisal of the property.
The structure.
Structure, yeah, they'll do, they'll do a full appraisal, but they're specifically interested in the value of the, of the, obviously, the real estate, the property itself, the land.
And I remember reading something about the trees. The trees are calculated in there.
Yeah, see, because like, for me, as a uniqueness, and Bonnie McCarroll's got the same concern, is that we have a mitigation plan to save the red oats. And like mine was a, it's nine thousand dollar, it's like ninety-five hundred dollars mitigation to help save that tree. So that's just, that's just the Bartlett tree bill, not counting my sprinkler move, not counting, you know, any other, so I, my offer from them right now is just over eight grand, which doesn't even cover the mitigation of the tree. So there'll be some negotiating. Okay, I'm not looking forward to it.
We do have three homeowners who have, thank you.
Nice.
Say thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, please, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Um, we do have three homeowners who have turned in their, uh, their paperwork.
Okay.
And they're ready to go, so.
There's just one problem, Doc, or maybe two. I think you can guess who those are.
Later. But you feel comfortable where the, uh, easement markers are adjacent to your trees, because they seem fairly close, but.
I conceded that it would be the normal middle of the road, twenty-five feet off the center. I conceded that. Am I happy that it's as close to the trees? No. But I conceded to that because I know that, that otherwise, this would not get done, and we, the city would then be on the hook for all the money we've already spent if we miss the timeline to actually do this process. So we're talking about some of the neighborhood, what, five or six hundred thousand dollars that's been spent so far. If we don't get the grant done, the city's on the hook to pay it back a whole amount. So I, could I hold it back two years? Oh, yes, I could. Do I want to? No. It can be done, it's not hard. So.
Is there a plan B in case there is, in case you, there is a roadblock that is insurmountable?
No.
Just to keep Martindale the good graces of the grant companies and, you know what I mean?
Well, I don't think we really need one.
I don't think.
I think we'll work through everything at this point. Okay, since we're talking about grants, I've sent this out in the utility bill, I've sent it to the city council people. So we have three more weeks to encourage people to take this survey. We've had, uh, day before yesterday. Uh day before yesterday, I talked to um Jerry, uh the lady who's helping us with this. And there were thirty-nine responses, so that's pretty good. Um, we do have, I think I sent out the word in case you come across people who don't want to do this. The QR code. Um, so one thing we did talk to her about the other day was there weren't any questions on there about the river. And that's probably the most important thing in in Martindale to people. So she was gonna try and add a question about the river. So are there any questions about that? If you can help encourage people to to take this, that would be really helpful. Okay, so the Rise Broadband is a company that is challenging spectrum. They've sent a lot of engineering. Uh, oh, what what would you call it? A lot of engineering drawing plans. Uh to the city, I mean, it's like thirty pages of it. And we're working on a contract. Um, we all, I also have them talking to Gary Freeland. Because where they wanna go first is Northwest River Road between Highway eighty and uh Quail Run. Um, to get across the river to go probably to River Ranch and those areas. So that's where they wanna develop first. I know if you're like me, I've gotten two advertisements for Rise Broadband. In the mail, but they haven't laid their lines yet. So they're waiting on us to get uh to negotiate this contract.
Will that contract be presented to council or is this something that you sign yourself?
Well, it's not even, would it even be a contract or would it be a?
Um.
Permit process.
So basically what they're, what they'll need from us is a plan to review, uh permit. Um process to access our right of way, but they're subject to the rules of the Public Utility Commission for really their operations and. Um, what sort of fees they pay the city as a, as a franchise fee. And so the only thing that's a little bit up in there is. Making sure that in our agreement for them to access the right of way. That they reimburse us for any plans or view costs that Bear Bear toss or our engine might charges. Other than that, it's all. It's kind of out of our hands.
Yeah. So I've talked to him about what we're doing on Northwest River Road and and so has Gary Freeland. And those will be passed through cause, because when we talk to our engineer. Okay, and um I have been talking on, I didn't know what to call it exactly, the. Kate, Adrian started this May nineteenth of twenty-three, if you go back to that. Agenda, he had done a whole presentation on why we should do this. And so I've started talking to, it's Kate. Uh, what, I think that's the one I mean, Kate DeGennaro. It's D E G E.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
M N A R O. From the Texas Water Development Board. So I sent her the ordinances last week and tomorrow I hope to work on the permit list. Part of what has slowed me down is that. Uh, we developed a newer system in twenty-three, starting in twenty-three. To streamline how we were uh giving the permits numbers. And so I'm going from an old system to a new system. And then the eight months that Lee Russ was here are gone. So I have to recreate those and she wants five years, uh basically a Excel log of five years of permits. Uh, so I've been working on that and then we'll go forward in that process. So. There's been a lot I've been working on.
Yeah.
So.
So let me, let me just ask those. So how do the permits relate to this community assistance? Do they relate to this foot program thing?
Yeah, so they wanna know what our ordinances are and what we're doing to help uh mitigate. Like flooding problems, like building the homes, the two, the two-foot freeboard and stuff like that. So they reviewed our ordinances. And like, one of the things that when I went to the river advisory meeting this last time. I asked them to help develop um a letter and some guidance on homeowners as to. And to look up what the rules are, because that's what takes so much time, it's just all of this research. On building docks, everybody who lives on the river just throws up a bunch of wood. And then the next flood, it just goes on down the river. And there's only one dock in this whole city that's ever been permitted and that was Mike McClabs. And it's really built, uh, it's got steel beams in there and it's really not going anywhere. Not to go out, we're not gonna go and uh, you know, do anything to homeowners, but what we wanna do is we want to. Educate them on how docks should be built and that they should be getting permits to build these docks. Because you never see until you're floating down the river that somebody has built a dock. And I think it's kind of like when you're putting a new roof on the house. People, they think, well, I'm not building anything, I'm just repairing the roof. And they don't understand that they need to come and get a permit, so they don't. Hardly anybody ever comes and asks for a permit to do a dock on the river. So that's one thing I've asked the the river. Um, River Advisory Board to help me with. One thing that Matthew has been working on that's gonna be extremely helpful. And he's not quite done with it, but I'm sorry, I'm gonna go ahead and mention it. He's uh developing a form for the city to use for the um impervious cover. And it'll be work uh like a work form, like how much uh land do you have? If you have a half acre, this is how much acreage you would have. And then you go out as a homeowner and you measure, you do the measurements. Do you have a driveway? Do you have a utility shed? You know, what size is your house? How much ground is it covering? And that way, when the homeowner does all of those measurements. Um, then they come back and they say, okay, this is how much ground we have covered. And they're gonna see whether or not they can put another structure or something. Another carport or something on their property. And that's gonna be extremely helpful to put that to use when people get building permits.
Yeah, I basically took a whole bunch from a different, and the main worksheet is actually from Austin. It's Austin has an Excel spreadsheet. So basically, most of it's, I just took their template. Made a couple modifications at the river, you know, that the mayor suggested and. The committee had suggested, so it's, it's about ninety percent there. I'm waiting for feedback from the committee.
So even though you're working on that format wise, the the principles of it would still apply. Since we passed the changes in the impervious cover.
Yes, the the goal is to get the customer to understand where they fit in the criteria, you know, I have X amount of square feet of land. I currently have covered this amount, so this is my current percentage, so the form will automatically calculate that. And then say, well, this is how much more can, you know, cover.
It would almost be good, as you say, for the homeowners to to equate that and have that before they submit. Uh, a building permit plan, because they're, they're gonna spend a lot on to build a garage this size on their land and then. It's like then later they may find out that that structure is is too large.
Yeah.
And won't work and so they're gonna have to change it, so.
So it would be part of the building permit process, paperwork.
Hand it in, I mean, with the.
Given to them as like with the setbacks and whatever.
And that's how it is and, you know, I, it's wherever else does it, they make the, it is, it is the burden of the homeowner to calculate.
Yes.
And then it's the burden of the city to validate those measurements.
Yeah, because recently Mari did submit to build a new garage on on his or a secondary garage and then. Of course, there's the house and there's the garage that's currently there. So you're saying they would measure the house, they would measure the garage.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, everything.
Anything where the ground can't, the rain can't penetrate.
Anything, and that's, that's in your property, easement other than the right of way.
Yeah, I've, I've discovered recently with all the homes that. Uh, some of the surveys are somewhat old or may not match up to what is currently going on. And I know even over here, there's questions about Gonzales Street and how far the homeowner's own land on Austin Street or Gonzales Street and. So all that stuff would get hashed out in deeds and titles and all that.
I checked Mari's myself and he's really close.
Yeah.
But he's okay.
Okay.
He's really close, like.
You looked at the square footage of the new garage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked the mayor how big it was. I pulled it, I pulled what was on the CAD and saw what he had. He's, he's, he's close.
Yeah.
He's right at, he's right at the limit. He's at nineteen, eighteen point something, nineteen percent, but he's not at twenty. He's really close. I did look.
Yeah.
I did look. That's the mayor.
Sure, yeah.
Um, one of the things that the River Advisory Board is looking at and what we're doing is that when we have a homeowner. It comes in and on that worksheet, they're really, really close to that going over what the ordinance is. Is there's a, I think basically called credits, so you can find ways and credit the homeowner. Um, different things. If they have, like for instance, if they have a deck, underneath the deck, is there. Um, plastic, take the plastic away.
Hmm.
Um, uh water collection systems, so that's different things. Changing a cement sidewalk into a gravel cement.
Hmm.
So basically the other ways to get your percentage down, but also take the water to go to the ground. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. So when we do have a um, you know, a homeowner that is in a predicament. I mean, it's your house, you wanna do what you wanna do, but maybe you can help them. It's not, it's not too really brutal, but it's like, we're on the river, we want. You know, we don't want everything flushing down, so.
Also, the River Advisory Board is working on percentages of what's considered permeable. So like the millings that the Catholic Church put down, you know, uh that was one of the first things that we dealt with. I remember that day that they came in and said, well, the Catholic Church is putting down asphalt. So Jared and I jumped in his pickup truck, ran down there and. We came back and we did some research and we said, well, that's considered a permeable material. At that point, we had passed that law so quickly or that ordinance so quickly. That we didn't think about, oh, well, that's still covering the ground, maybe it should be considered fifty percent. Um, coverage instead of a hundred percent. Does that make sense? I hope I'm making sense. Like you'd consider, okay, so millings are are recycled asphalt. So it is making the ground so that they can still park cars, but grass can still grow through the millings. So it would be considered more like fifty percent instead of a hundred percent.
Impervious or.
We're impervious, yeah. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're working on that too with the different materials.
Okay.
So when we get all of that, it'll be very helpful.
Thank you.
Um, okay. I think I'm, I'm talking.
Um, I think we have a PowerPoint presentation that didn't make it to the packet. Uh, but what I, what we wanna talk about is Government Window Software as a Service. Um, what it does is it's a platform that integrates with our accounting system. To write payment options to customers of the city services. Primarily for us, what we're looking to do is to create payment options for utility payments, permitting. And also traffic citations or municipal court fees. And so what they do is they provide a platform to to do that and. Skimma, basically charge the user like in our Park Mobile application. Charge the user of this application, the customer, a percentage fee on the credit card transaction. Um, if you wanna go to the next slide, I'll, I'll go through this quickly. The, the intent of bringing this to you now in this context of administrative report. Is I wanna see if there's an interest by city council to have a more detailed um product demonstration prior to engaging in an agreement. Um, with the vendor or not, or if this kind of scratches the itch. So this is a um marketing brochure that the government, that the Government Window folks gave us. The, the key for us is we're using um. Clerkbooks, which is an application add-on to our QuickBooks application that helps us do our municipal accounting. It's not a widely used um form and it's also a cost savings form compared to other. More in-depth um accounting software. This is the only, to our knowledge, uh payment window application that integrates with the clerk books. Uh, accounting software that we use directly or they, or the two kind of communicate because they. The two companies have already developed the data linkages. Um. So what this would be is we would contract with them, get an agreement with them to write. You know, these services, and of course, they market it. It's, it's easy, it's great. And it's, we, we did a product demonstration, what, two months ago, six weeks ago, something like that. Um, it was just good now getting it spaced on the count, on the agendas to bring this to you. You know, the next slide. So what, the key thing that. Works well for them, they don't address it on this slide, but it kind of comes as like no cost, no contract. They actually guarantee the funds at transaction to the city. So the moment that somebody says like a court traffic citation, they go to pay it. But they pay with like a fraudulent credit card or other transaction that bounces, the city still gets paid. They, this company takes on the, the risk of, you know, getting those people the bad check, so to speak. Um, there are some schemes where people will pay with a, a credit card and then cancel the transaction or something after that and they'll get the. The citation waived in the process. Well, this helps ensure the revenue capture on the city's half behalf. In those scenarios, there's different rates that they charge based on the level of risk and and things and customers' number of transactions. For each transaction type and we'll get into that, but. Proven timely, no cost, no contract. Well, we already turned into a contract, but it's not like a set term. There's no set term. It's kind of an at-will agreement between us and them. And no cost, there's no cost to City of Martindale, but it's cost to the customer to use it. Next slide. Um, it's reliable, they provide all these things. The biggest thing for us is accepts major credit cards. And has online payments, automated voice phone payment, so someone, you know, the robot desk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, press one to pay your utility bill, press two to pay your traffic citation. Type in your um, a citation number and then they can pay it. Um, or if if we wanted to, we have, we have a kiosk instead of walk-up point-of-sale system, we could do that. Likely what our own clerks will be using that point-of-sale system, but it does have recurring auto-payments. Um, in addition to our current auto-payment structures. If people want to view their bill, billing history, they're able to do that on this platform and it's very, it's what you come to expect. For most services that you're, as a customer, you're engaging with on day day, you can go and view your account information, make payments. Um, and other things. Let's go to the next one. Weather and mobile, it, it works both on webpage and mobile devices. Is ADA compliant, all those things, customizes, customize the linkages. Into our, our process flows and with permits and other things. You know, the next one.
Big up wave to, yeah, but what do you mean by ADA compliance?
So there's a requirement in the ADA that like if someone has visually impaired. That they might have a screen reader software that works. Their system is worked with screen readers for someone who's like visually impaired or other things, so if it's uh. There are certain design characteristics of webpages that most of them are required to uh be accommodating.
Do you think they have like larger font or hearing impaired or whatever? It, it could cover any of that stuff possibly.
Yeah, if they're hearing impaired, it, it has to be able to basically, as they, as they're highlighting the text, it will actually speak to them in the ear. Got a friend of mine that's that way. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, there's a system portal, so there's like this, you can log into your own system, see your bill, pay your bill when you want, or you just have to. Um, yeah, there's a system portal. So there's like this, you can log into your own system, see your bill, pay your bill when you want, or you can set the auto-payment. Go ahead with the next one. IVR phone system, kind of like I said, you know, hey, you can type in your code. You can do this twenty-four seven. Um, press zero, speak to a city employee kind of thing and that helps us hopefully. Um, cut down on the amount of payment transactions we have to process. Right, go to the next. Uh, this is a point-of-sale walk-up system. If we wanted to do that, they do provide us the merchant, uh, credit card readers as part of this. Uh, so we don't have to pay for any additional, um, fees from, from a reader standpoint. Um. And I think that's another main point here. Go to the next. Customer portal. Um. Yeah, I mentioned that. Let's go to the next slide. And they, they provide a whole bunch of different, uh, payment options. You know, if we had a. Um, in addition to, you know, courts and utilities. We could eventually expand this into hotel tax revenue collection and other things, but for now. We're a little focused on the court utilities and the permits. Um, and then maybe expanding it from there. So. What this is, what this charge is, is for a utility payment. There's a minimum three percent fee or a dollar fifty minimum to the customer when they make a payment. That is pretty much in line with standard. Um. When they're making a traffic payment, there's a six percent fee or a dollar fifty minimum. A six percent fee is basically a risk-adjusted rate because of, uh. You know, propensity for people to have fraudulent transactions.
Lawbreakers.
For the lawbreakers. Um, and a four percent fee, um, payment for permits. Not sure why the distinction there between utility payments. Um, my guess is that they're balancing their, their revenue based on transactions. Um, the limited transactions. We, we would receive two different, uh, point-of-sale. Card swipers, if you will, for, for the city. So this is part of our transition to get leaner, more efficient, automated. When it comes to customer interface and managing transactions, allow customers to do as much as themselves for themselves. For things like permits. Um, this will build upon what I hope to bring in the future. You know, automated permitting process or cloud internet-based permitting process. But for now, getting the efficiencies in payments of traffic citations should improve traffic citation payment compliance. Utilities providing more, um. Flexibility to our customers.
We checked that, that data that they have is going to be able to migrate.
So the, the, the court system right now is using outside of clerkbooks, which is what we use for most of our general operations. The court uses a Tyler Technologies encode, uh, software. Now, they are. Tyler Technologies doesn't play as nicely with government systems, however. There is a very easy, you know, basically bulk file, comma separated Excel file type of download you can do. Each day out of encode and then you update on this and you do it, you know, in the mornings. And so if someone's looking at their traffic bill and they pay it that minute, you don't have it instantaneous record like, yes, you pay. It takes twenty-four hours to, you know, reflect that you've paid or something. We've contacted other cities who use in Texas that use this and use it with encode. Was it Mansfield?
I can't, no, it was somewhere up.
It was up near Dallas, yeah. Um, in a larger city. And they, they said it took them about a week to figure out and get the bugs out, but by, by the end of that first month. It was so integrated with the business process, the simple file, download, upload process that they had to kind of work around for the encode. Um, wasn't too much of an inhibitor for, for them.
Is, is, is anyone who will see where they're, where their statuses on the utility bill, whether they're paying online or not with this system? Or is this just, hey, I'm getting my bill from, uh, the mail out and I'm then logging in and paying it?
You know, you could get paperless billing and view your bill on here, my understanding, and also all your billing history.
So in essence, it will be the, the, the front of the portal.
Yeah.
So I pay with a check or I have, I pay six months in advance. It's still going to show me my dad, even if I'm not actively using it.
The main feature that we've been fighting to get for a couple of years is so you can see your history online.
Yeah, because you sent a statement out and, you know, that's not giving the history, you know what I mean? Statements are not that.
You know, look like what your bill was a year ago this month or.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
I know, every, every utility.
And, uh, and the, um, people that are on the automated ACH now, there's over a hundred people on it. That continues to be at no cost. I'm able to process that straight through the bank. So they don't have to worry about fees, uh, from this.
Right.
It's only people who want to use a card. So currently with the municipal court as it is, when someone pays the clerk, I heard that we get daily reports. From them say about that and we know, do we know who pays cash and who pays with a, uh, card on our current?
They're cashless.
No one pays cash. They pay, they pay money orders and credit cards only. So if, if you walk up, cash is not accepted? It's not. We send them to the post office or wherever to get a money order. And so then Jared, what are your projections about the, well, you've told us about the feasibility of this, but how is it going to? Effect our personnel costs? Like, will it eventually go like this? Well, they'll be doing this and then we'll have less.
But the good news for us is that there's no direct cost. A lot of times these systems, not all the time. But some, depending on how they structure the fees to the customer, are going to charge a setup fee to the, the client with, with the city. They're, they're not, um, it's all borne by the, the customer. So there's no cost to the city there in terms of adjusting hours. But I do expect is that. More people will pay online, especially their traffic citations, because that's not an option currently.
Hmm.
You'll get some level of that. We've already a hundred people on automated payments. That's what, it's a quarter.
Yeah.
Of our, of our total customer base. That, that could continue to grow. We've only rolled that out, what, last eighteen months? Um, so. The demand for clerks' time on doing, uh, payment transactions should continue to decrease. Allowing them to work on other things or in our case, as we're planning for in this next budget year, to combine duties. To reduce personnel costs through attrition. Um, of our two clerks. Right now, any given day, we're paying for one person to do the court and another person to do the utilities. While more, more payments go to automated or outside the office, then those duties can be combined. So it helps facilitate that.
When do you think you would want to face in the Airbnb, uh, part of that?
Uh, that's.
Can I speak on that?
So there's, there's ways that may not necessitate Airbnb payments through this portal. That we're looking at. I know councilman or governor mentioned that, you know, Airbnb, if you, if you contact them. Sign an ordinance, Airbnb is responsible for paying the taxes that they dutifully, you know.
Yeah, they'll, they'll do it.
Um, so we, there's other options that we might look at besides hotel taxes, but. The, that's another option. If we were to do, I don't know, if we want to sell merchandise. Martindale branded merchandise, it's like a city hall fundraiser or something or associated with the River Appreciation Event. You know, buy a T-shirt from city hall. You can do e-commerce like transactions through this portal as well. It's not frequent, but it could happen. Um.
There's flexibility.
There's flexibility in the type of transaction.
Maybe we could do parking through there.
Yeah, maybe like an annual parking pass would be, would be something that.
Well, I'm just saying that we had a little code that went to the proper page. They could sit a park mobile, it could go through here. And I mean.
Uh, I think it's possible. Yeah.
But it, the question for council and reason for making a presentation instead of a decision on a, on a contract is whether you would want to see a. Um, product demonstration from the vendor before considering contracting. If not, we'll just come back next week or next, right, council meeting with the proposed terms for approval.
I wouldn't mind seeing a presentation about this because it's easier for me to explain it to someone else partially. I mean.
Yeah, from that standpoint, I agree with Sammy, Mr. Klein, is that if, if we're going to be the people that are going to explain the, the cost and what it is, we need to know how to use it. And I trust your judgment on this one because I know it's the only choice and you obviously called the other cities, I'm rolling this big, big proponent on, so. But if, if we need to know how to use it to, to educate the, the public. I wouldn't, I would not be against that, obviously. So I would probably not use it, but I like, I like to be able to know. Sorry to, sorry to slow it down.
Terry or, uh, Mike, any, any thoughts on a product demonstration prior to contracting or?
Are they still there?
We got Mike.
They've been awfully quiet.
I would like it. My, my mic is muted, so that's why, but that's okay. Yes, I would like a presentation.
Okay.
That's, that's more than that. Three wins it. Not that it's a necessary decision, but I'll, I'll kind of take that, that.
I'm here. You need me?
Yeah, well, uh, well, I was asking if you want to see a product demonstration prior to considering the, the contract and same. Council's leaning that way, Mike.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm flexible.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll work with the person and try to provide a quick five, ten-minute or client-focused, you know. Um, or customer-focused presentation on what, what it would kind of look like before we get. Might take us a little bit of time to set them up.
Yeah, the only reservation I have now about including Airbnb and it is that if they're paying. The customer is paying six percent of the tax to the city, that they'll pay an additional four or six percent to this.
Yeah.
To make a payment. So then it would be like ten percent more.
Yeah, it would, it, it, it would. It would have a, a, an additional charge to it at some level, but.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you're, if you're, if you're only doing transactions here or there, you, you know, you're not the Airbnb that's. Constantly filled with gas. Does that make sense?
So on the automatic pay, auto pay that we currently have with the utilities, how will that? Auto pay interface at all? It won't interface with this. This is just another option.
The only thing that you'd see interface is the status of, of your billing history. And so it would show that you, your balance is zero, uh, zero due, um, or what your past billing was. But the transactions would be processed outside of this by our accountant. Um, because it's free, it's a free option to our customer. So for those who want to pay by check and have automated payments, the best option is to register with that, the city with their existing forms.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Um, ongoing grants, we, we covered, we've covered most of that. I don't think. Cover the resilient communities, Northwest Road. The only other one that really top of mind is what we'll talk about next is the. Uh, project for the wastewater treatment plant and, yeah, and the engineering. So this is a engineering study that Freeland and Turk has produced to kind of set what they're intending to do. Um. The, the main areas that, that you want to focus on, on this report starts on, uh, I guess it'd be page eight of your packet. Um, it talks about what, what actually is happening. So at the Crockett lift station. There, the project includes improving the road, um, to the lift station along Crockett, which is. Pretty bad, just repaired, very narrow. Um, and then providing an access turnaround point for, um. The service provider. The, and then some work regarding the power systems, replacing the generator, adding, uh, surge protection. And, um, needed, we'll follow up with them. The one thing on my mind is I don't see the transfer switch located on this. This general statement is one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure we had a, an ability to cycle. Uh, the generator on and off, which has been burned out by surges over and over and over and over again. Down there. Um. The, the generator is kind of an unfortunate thing. The city, it's just in my time years. Probably spent ten thousand dollars or more trying to keep that generator in repair and it keeps falling out of service. So we do need to replace it and that's, that's a cost covered under the grant, but that's what they're. On the treatment plant, on page nine of the, your total agenda packet is, includes irrigation system improvements. Um. And some firm improvements out there and balance and, and things. Um. The, there is no fencing on the perimeter of the property. So that's one of the things that's a significant cost. It's almost half the grant, unfortunately. Um. But it is a needed, it is a needed element, so.
What is the city's, uh, match on this? You have to match on this?
Oh, um.
And we're not going, we're not going over the grant amount.
No, because the grant amount is something we've already accepted. So basically what, what this report is. Is kind of a next step in the execution of that grant. I'd have to go back on this.
But we're not going over the budget of the grant?
No.
That's what I'm worried about. It's going, you know, going over budget.
It was five hundred thousand. So they, they have the total grant. You know, their, the opinion probable cause, which is the next page following this. Has a ten percent contingency and that even with the ten percent.
Two hundred and forty-seven dollar home front fences.
Yeah, it's fencing.
Crazy.
Chain link fence for, was it almost a mile and?
He's putting, he's putting a razor on this out too. He's doing a securities.
Security fence, yeah. So it's.
I think that's a little high. I, so, but it's not, you know, we're not, as long as we're not going out of money, that's his responsibility that.
We've had trouble with cows getting in there.
No, I, I'm not saying we don't need them, but I'm just saying that I think that dollar is high. I think he's, I think he's put a high number there.
Yeah.
But he's going to, he'll go to, he has to go to bed for it before he does it, right?
Yep. Yep.
Uh, how much is the engineer charging? Is it forty thousand or I, I said those first few lines where we're trying to. I was trying to figure out how much they're charging, say to write this report up or. Uh, mobility, there was some.
Mine too is, yeah, ten percent is mobilization is forty thousand dollars. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's often where something like this is coming from.
You know, doesn't, does it say anywhere what their, what their maximum allowable amount is to. Charge out of the grant? I mean, because we have the same thing with the, say, the Northwest Road grant, but I saw that mobilization and I'm not sure what that means.
We'll take that back to him. Last question.
Yeah.
Uh, also you mentioned the Crockett and how it's the road from Fan into the lift station is, needs to be improved, but you mentioned the narrowness of it. Is that going to be into play because the property boundaries going up to Crockett are almost right up on the sides of, of the street? So were you saying that, saying because you said narrow, does that mean widening the road itself or just improving the quality of the road?
It's improving the quality, stretching it as far as we can. Maybe that's not a lot, but the, and then the, we're, we're not creating, say, a, a two-way traffic on that street really or. We're putting a turnaround, um, at the end of it. So if you go to, uh, you have page fifteen, I think.
Which is our, the. Which is our, the turn, turnarounds are already on city property anyway.
Yeah, you can, you, here's kind of the way down of where the street's going to be and how they're, how they're going to put in the turnaround.
That's concrete or gravel?
It's going to be paved.
Maybe find that out then.
Um.
It's, it's properly paved.
Okay, you read it.
Um, it's oh, it says like chip seal, um, more or less pavement.
Drainage? I guess we have to make the combinations for drainage or are we just going to let it drain off onto the adjacent properties?
I don't, so I believe the, the talks in here about a 25 year event. Um, I don't know if this is in the context of the road design, but the road design is considered in here, including the, the sloping, you know, the, the the knuckle of the road. I don't know what the, the technical term is. Um. Hi, what's that? Did see a road drawing in here. But we're not going through and doing, you know, big stormwater ditch system. If anything, anything sizable, it's likely just going to run off the sides. Here we go, page seventeen. Seventeen. So you can see the, the gravel base, the surface treatment, the, the chip seal. And then there's, there's not, we're not doing any additional gutter systems. Stormwater bedding. Not a whole lot of road that's, that's going on. Basically covering one house.
Yeah.
Two houses, one on the north and the south side.
Yeah, there's a road already there. We're not, we're not raising the road.
Hmm.
Just rounding, yeah, just.
Right.
You went on that one. It's, it's.
Pretty bad.
It's pretty bad.
And so we'll send out notices then to the residents along that street?
Yeah, when it comes time. At this point, this is just the preliminary engineering study. Um, once this is in place, then the additional processes will follow from that. And we'll let them know when, when construction's happening and make accommodations and plans with them about accessing their, to the property and such.
And the, the berm, we're not going to get in trouble by putting a berm there to bring water?
There, there already is ditch work out there. Um, that was done under the prior engineers, the engineer, Haley, they did some ditch work out there to convey water around our ponds because ponds are kind of set, the, the the area out there is sloped and so they had to channel some water. So there's already been some, some ditching and burn work out there. And so this is just doing a little bit more. On the same.
There is a little bit more of the filling in of the gravel pit adjacent to that property line there, and I don't know what impact that has on anything, but there's.
That's, that's at the treatment plant, up at the treatment plant.
Well, no, I, I mean, beside the lift station on, on, on Crockett, there's, there's been more filling in of the gravel pit adjacent to that. I don't know what kind of impact that has on the world or anything, but.
Not on this project. So what we're going to do is after this, I, I just want to provide counsel opportunity to ask questions. I'll take some of the questions back. Those responses are satisfactory. All of these approve this preliminary. And as we get to the finals, I'm sure they'll, they'll be up to me to, to wait again. But the scope of the project, this could be essential limits. I'll ask about the, the fencing.
Well, it'll go to bed and it'll be the cheapest one. I just think, I, I think it's high, but I would put it, put it in high anyway. It's the right thing to do on the bed. Make sure you.
Yeah.
How, how many running feet long is the fence?
Almost a mile.
Fifty, 500 feet. It's over, it's actually over a near mile.
Yeah, just over.
Just over. I know I did the math. I'm like, we need how much? And then I looked it up and like something like, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't believe that number. But the lot is, the property is 39 points something acres.
All right, and uh, the next one, hiring. Um, so we, we have had, see, I'm trying to remember the last stuff that we gave, we had had some conversations with, with candidates um, on different positions that didn't work out. The last one, uh, we did have an interview for, with a candidate on a city administrator position. Um, he declined it when we asked for references because of the salary limits. Um, that's kind of put I was talking with the mayor prior to this meeting on, on some plans going forward and I'll, I'll let her consider that and think on it before making announcements to council. How she wants to proceed on the city administrators' um, succession planning. Because that does have an impact on some of the decisions that are made regarding a city clerk, a municipal clerk, and then for, you know, Deanna's filling in for now. And also some of the, the other jobs. The other thing that's going on is the, as the mayor announced at the last council meeting, that the judge has indicated his intention to resign or that he would resign or will resign. Um, we haven't received the official letter yet.
Yeah, we have intensity.
Okay, um, so then with the resignation, we're, we'll be putting out the next week. Or we're planning to put it out regardless of whether it's a nature or not, just knowing that was pending. The uh, job announcement for the municipal uh, judge position. And try to have that filled, have, have candidates job on, it was closing probably by first of October. And if we can fill it by the first of November, it's probably with the track that went on. Um.
Is there a way to us to review the salary of, of the judge? Because I think Matthew looked up a town comp comparable of our size that has the same amount of fines, say $100,000 a year, and their salary was a quarter of what we're paying our judge currently.
So certain cities manage it on a per hour basis, some, some do it differently. I think when we go up to the job announcement, it's going to be depending on qualifications. And then the city council can negotiate the compensation with the candidates as they're select, or as that person selected. Um, I think there's, there's various ways to, to structure the conversation and we'll, I think using that for now is the best approach because there's some variability and how it all works. Um. Yeah, honestly, if the question is what was a prior judge, I think, I mean, that's, that's public knowledge. That's, it's what, what we're advertising or we're expecting to spend on this next judge. I, I think it could be widely different depending on the, the compensation structures and what the market is for.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm the question man tonight because we got two people on Zoom and Laura's deep in thoughts, so. Pardon me if I'm being too questioning.
No, 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 that's what, that's what these reports are for and not, I'd like tonight to get all these reports out.
That's for that.
And unless there's any other questions, that concludes my city administrative report.
Yep.
Okay, so um, we're going to move on to three point one, uh, discussion and possible action. Action to propose a property tax rate equivalent to the voter approval rate um, 0.3082 per hundred dollars for fiscal year 2025.
Yeah, this is, so the way that this works is we have to, the city has to propose a rate. And then later you adopt the proposed rate and because of some of the delays um, agenda setting and others, tonight we need to um, vote on a proposed, I think, action on a proposed rate. We're not adopting, proposing. Um. And this rate is reflected in the, the budget, the draft budget. And the, as, as the budget shows and Deanna had it pulled up, as uh, well, generates $12,000 in additional revenue from last year. Um, about 2,000 of that is from the property value being added to the rolls.
And this is the highest rate that we can.
Yeah, this is, this is equal to the voter approval rate.
Yeah.
Anything higher than this rate would have to get an election, which we don't have time for.
Nope. So you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, let me get to the right page, excuse me.
Thank you.
Is that right? Twenty-five then twenty-four or is that backwards?
Uh, no, that's right. Okay. It's, you can also just read off the.
Okay.
Vote on this.
So I make a motion to approve the property tax rate equivalent to the voter approval rate of 0.3082 per hundred for the fiscal year 2025.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? A second. Okay, and Laura seconds. Is there any more discussion? Okay, so on this, I believe we have to have a roll call vote. So um, Matthew made the motion and Laura seconded it. Uh, Sam, how do you vote?
Uh, aye.
Uh, Mike, how do you vote?
I vote yes. I vote yes.
Thank you. And uh, Terry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so the next one is to approve the minutes from August 1st 2024. We're going to have two sets of minutes to approve.
Oh, those are ones that were in the packet, right?
Yes. Well, I think one set, were they both in the pack?
They're both in the iPads. If you get out of that PDF.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one you were working on today, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The fun one? Can I make a motion to approve the August 1st, 2024 special city council meeting minutes?
You can do one motion if you don't want to.
Oh, I can?
Yeah.
I also like to approve, I make a motion to approve the August 15th 2024 Redder City Council minute, minute.
Minute, minutes, meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes, okay. Uh, we have a motion to accept three point two and three point three. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Laura has seconded it. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And Terry?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Okay, so that's for both of them. And then we'll uh, move on to three point four. I thought Randy would be here tonight because he had asked for this to be put on the agenda. This is, so Laura, maybe you can help us out. All right. Um, so this is something that Laura, when she was on the um, historic committee, started working on and had uh, left it for the commission to finish up with. These uh, guidelines were to, to put something solid in place so that there were guidelines as to like the fence. Like what kind of fence should that be if it was going to be for that particular house? What should the fence look like? And I'll, I think I'll just let you talk about.
All right. Um. Basically, we went through and looked at, um, I don't know, a million different cities in Texas and what their uh, historic guidelines. What their approach to them was and um, the most simple um, and probably the most common was to identify what each of the house styles was. And then determine what are the most historically relevant aspects of that style of house. So if you have a Victorian, here are the six hallmark traits of a Victorian house. And those are the things that you shouldn't change. Other things you can change. They still have to go through the committee, but we don't necessarily want to be nitpicking at everything they do. We're just saying, look, it don't change these things if you have um, a uh, wait, what does my mom have? Uh.
You said Victorian.
I said Victorian as an example. That would be like Ms. Anne's house uh, or Sean's house, but I don't think Sean's actually in it. Uh.
Sean's is in the historic.
He had the end of it.
I think his housing is.
Is the last one. Yeah, I can correct. Um.
Is your mother's a craftsman?
Craftsman. Yes, thank you. Uh, so um, yeah, so if you have a craftsman, here's the six key features of having a craftsman. So those are the things that you shouldn't change. Um, and I don't know, whatever. So um, the guidelines are very long. Um, but that's because the committee had decided that they wanted to include, number one, some of the historic information about the city. So we took that from Maury's application to make um, Duette's building be a historically um, relevant site in Texas. So we used their history. So that's included in there. And then we also included all of the information that is from the ordinances actually appears here. So that if you buy a house in the historic district, you get this copy of the, the guidelines. And it already tells you, you also need to have the city permit. You also need to have this. And these are the definitions that we use and whatever. So um, it has the app, it has the actual current um, permit application in there. So you, and it tells you where to find it. It's hyperlinked all of that. So if you're a pen and paper person, you could just take it right out of there, write on it. If you're not, it tells you how to go get one and fill it out online. And when you change that, they'll just need to update that because I know you're trying to make it be an online process, but they can change that then. So all of the um, ordinances are, are like right there. That's the vocabulary or what do you call glossary? Um, and so that's just, yes, that's right out of our city ordinances. So um, that's why it's long. It's not, all of the length is not the um, is not the actual guidelines. It's, it's all the other stuff so that it was all in one place. So um, it tells you, here's like for Victorian houses, here are the all of the Victorian homes in the Martindale city limits. They're at this address, this address, this address. These are all Victorians. Here are the six most important things about that. And it, so you can kind of easily identify your property, where you fit on here and tell what it is that you need to comply with.
I think this is excellent.
I think it is too.
Thank you.
I love their history.
I know. I'm so happy that it's in there.
So this guidelines, does it include the changes that were made to the historic district? How it was expanded sort of patch quilty uh, into other homes that were not previously in the historic district?
Yes and no. Um, where we left that process, we didn't actually expand anything yet. Nothing's been changed and that's because we realized, uh, Quentin and I, Quentin and I were talking to some of the proposed homeowner people that would be included in that. Wait, let me back up if you don't know. Um, when Maury went to apply for his um, landmark stuff, um, he paid some very, very, very um, I don't know what you call it, um, like impressive, well-qualified consultants to put together all the paperwork and put together all the stuff and get his, they walked it through the process and got him approved. And so in the process of doing that, what happened is they created um, a federal and slash state because the federal one and the state one are the same. So it's a federal slash state historic district. It's different from the Martindale historic district by seven properties for no reason. Like there's not, they didn't do it because this or because that. They just, I don't know, no one knows what happened. But there's, they just walked the neighborhoods. They went, went and looked at all the different houses. And they said, these are the houses that should be included. And so they included them. And so they kind of made up their own. And um, so now we were, well, about a year ago, we were trying to decide do we now change the Martindale local one to match the federal state one, just so that we only have one historic district? Or do you end up with this confusion of like, people move in and they're like, well, I'm part of the federal one, but not the Martindale. Or do you end up with this confusion of like, people move in and they're like, well, I'm part of the federal one, but not the Martindale one, do I have to follow this? Am I part of it? We don't know, so we started talking to those seven people to ask them, did they wanna be in it or not? And, uh, then we realized we don't have any rules, so they were like, we don't know if we wanna be in it, are the rules stupid? We're like, we don't know, we don't have them yet, we're, like, that's our next thing, and so then we realized we had the cart before the horse. So we left it off with no changes have been made, we, what, we told those seven property owners, we will make rules and then we'll come back to you and discuss them with you. And you can decide, do you wanna be part of it or not, there's not really any advantage or disadvantage to being part of it. Um, it doesn't, other than needing a COA. And the biggest complaint that we got from people, from the seven families, was the COA process, that it was arbitrary and that there weren't any rules, and then it was just based on whoever happened to be on the committee that day, and that kind of thing. So, um, that's why we left it where we did and said, wait a minute, we'll be right back, let us get some rules, then you can look at them and decide. So that's where that stands, so once these get through, I, my understanding, I'm no longer on the committee, I haven't been at any meetings, just listening in, so you'll have to ask them for an update, but my understanding is that once these get approved, they need to then go back and have a meeting of the current people in the historic district and the seven people that could potentially be in it. And get their feedback and let them know that whatever decisions are changed, so, that, that's, that's where I left it.
Can they adopt those seven without their permission?
No. But if they're not in the current boundary.
Okay.
No, if they're currently in, the Martindale one is bigger than the federal state.
Oh.
No.
Is it?
Yeah, 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 like Crockett, they, they took several houses on Crockett, like Latrice's house.
Oh, they did?
Ray's house, I forget the other lady's name, the lady that lives across from Carmen. Um, those.
Is there any?
Yes, um, those three I know for sure were in the federal one, they're not in the local one.
Your mother's house?
My mom's house, yeah, that one was included.
It's not in.
It, 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 it's in the, the federal state one, it's not in the local one.
And like, uh, Latrice's is in the federal, but not.
Yeah, not in the local one. But, uh, my understanding was that I thought that they have to, I thought the order was they needed to, the whoever's on the committee needs to go to the families first and then go to the city council, but I could be wrong about that.
Kind of thing to do.
Yeah, I would.
I think, I, it would make sense to me to do that and get any of that feedback in case you wanna make any revisions before getting it to the city council, but I, but I don't know if that's real or if that's just an opinion.
I think that they would feel better about coming into the historic district, knowing that you have these rules that are black and white.
And that they had talked about them though, like that, that, I think getting the opportunity to discuss them where you feel like you had some sort of voice or input and you could say, no, that's stupid, we don't like that, and if you put that in, we're not joining. And then the committee can say, well, we, that's fine, we really feel strongly it needs to be in. Or, well, no, we can negotiate about that, you know, you know what I mean? But I don't, I don't know if that, that, I mean, that just might be my own opinion, I don't know if that's real. I don't know if it's in an ordinance, that you have to do it in that order. But it probably says so in there.
Well, we'll wait for the recommendation from the historic commission. But as far as this right now, do, do we have to write this into, with, could this just be like a policy manual? In addition to the ordinance?
This could be, this could be something that, I don't know, can you let me know, but I don't, that the historic commission could adopt for themselves to use as the adjudication certificate of appropriateness.
It's listed.
If it's something that the city wants to adopt, you probably wanna make it part of a overarching.
If you look up, if you scroll up to the part where it says the city's ordinance is part of what it says is that your historic district committee people will have, will create a set of guidelines. These would be those guidelines, they were never made.
Right, there's always been, what's certificate appropriateness in?
Oh, and you have a, a gabled roof in Victorian style, and I'm like, what is that?
Right. We started doing, um, a training, a historic, Texas Historic Commission has a two-hour training on how to be a historic district committee member, and it went through all of that, and it teaches the vocabulary and stuff, and that's where this whole process started. It was, oh, well, maybe we should write that down, so, um, so I know that it says you that the committee will have them, I don't know that it says how they are to be incorporated into the city's structure.
So, I, I mean, I agree with what was said, I think excellent document, excellent presentation of the document.
Thank you.
But, this is not an ordinance.
No.
This, this, I mean, effectively what the council can do tonight is in, say, the spirit of a resolution.
A good one.
Vote, vote to say, we, we vote to approve our support for this, because we think, we think this is a good document, it's a good plan, and we should aspire to this. And, and, I mean, moving forward to the extent that, say, there's something in the, in the code of ordinances that conflicts with this, the code of ordinances would control until such time as we change the code of ordinances to match with this, but I think what this does gives an excellent framework for the city to aspire to and work towards. And, and if we, we find those inconsistencies, then it gives the opening to say, well, we're just gonna continue to base that excellent work into, to do an ordinance and proceed that way. But yeah, if, if, if you guys wanna vote on it tonight, in the spirit of a resolution, say, we, we, we approve of this in that sense, absolutely.
I, I just clarify one thing, because I know the seven people had, um, apprehensions about adopting it, but from what I have seen, that it, if you have to adhere stringently to the C of A or the, uh, guidelines in this proposal, that it mostly applies to, say, as it did in Duets, where it was a commercial building and then he did all these upgrades, and as a result of that, according to the standards and of a C of A of historical guidelines, that he received a ample tax credit as a result of that. So I thought there was some difference between residential buildings and commercial buildings.
Yes.
In terms of, of receiving a tax credit.
Yeah, you don't receive tax credits for any residential property. So only for, that's why I was saying, for those seven properties, it's really just do they want to or not. There really is not any, and I, I, believe me, I asked everyone at the Texas Historical Commission, there was an email list that went around for a while that has like six different people from THC that, uh, basically. I mean, there are advantages, because obviously they were like, we work for the Texas Historic Commission. Like that's in our hearts to work on these historic properties, so we find that very valuable. But in terms of like tangible, is there a benefit to being in it? No, you don't get tax credits. Um, being part of the district in, in Martindale could assist the city in getting grants for like restoring the area, the, the downtown area or whatever. Um, it could be that at some point in time, because most of the historic district is in the mixed-use place. If you were to rent out your house for a commercial business, then you could basically get tax credits for commercial property, but you can't, you, you don't, there's no real monetary or other benefit to being in it, in a historic district otherwise.
So tonight, the guidelines are what has been put before. If the historic commission decides to adopt those seven properties into the historic district, that would be a separate action, that wouldn't be part of this, this just, this is just about the guidelines.
Right.
So, kind of two separate things.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
So, does somebody want to make a motion, uh, to approve or not approve these guidelines?
Uh, let's ask the people on Zoom, I mean, because I don't know if they feel like they wanna review all this, I mean.
They've had it for three days now.
Laura, why don't you do this one, just kinda?
I kind of feel like I should abstain, because I basically wrote them, so I don't think I can motion that we need to accept them.
You can do it.
You can do it, you have no financial gain.
You have, you got no money in the game, you got no property in the game, you're good to go.
I do have property, but it doesn't benefit my property.
Yeah, that's, that's so remote, there's no possibility, you're, you're more than five.
Yeah, these are just guidelines.
Yeah.
Hold on, someone unmuted too.
Terry, motion, that's your job.
Well, I don't mind making a motion, but I don't know what it's called, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution. Uh, that's the part I don't know. I don't know what it's called.
Martindale Historic District Guidelines.
Okay, I make a motion to approve, um, the historic commission, Martindale Historical Commission Guidelines.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so the motion carries. And then can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn at eight twenty-three PM.
Okay, eight forty-three, is there a second?
Eight twenty-three.
Matthew, are you getting seconded?
Second, second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.